Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this week's town hall. Um, I've got to tell you if they're when they write the script about this, they're gonna look at it and go dang, somebody wrote a fictional novel about this. We're too late. Because the reality is, okay, I want you to imagine this. You're in Gavin Newsom's office on Monday night. Well, what's his bill I'm signing? Well, Gavin, it's a bill that we think is gonna help you with the recall. That's the good news. It's gonna move it up. Move it up. That's gonna help me, right? And Gavin signs the bill. Gavin goes, am I on the ballot? Well, Gavin, you're not on the ballot. You're actually running against everybody. And we kind of have some good news and bad news for you. Gavin goes, what's the bad news? Really think this recall would take place, Gavin. So when we fill out the paperwork, to be honest, we weren't paying a lot of attention. And we didn't list you as a Democrat. Now, the next part, we can't repeat, even in my comedic skit, for family purposes. Well, Gavin goes, what's the good news? Well, you're not listed as a Republican. I want you to think the reality is, okay, how ridiculous, how actually inept the governor of California and the staff he picks. And I said this before, part of Gavin's problem is not only is he a poor manager, but picks management people that make poor decisions.
He surrounds himself with idiots.
Pretty much. E D D, right? Advice to go to the French Laundry. The list goes on.
Yeah.
You froze, Mike. I'm gonna assume that that's just Mike and his connection. He had a bad connection earlier, so I'm gonna carry on where he left off.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, it is absolutely absurd what this governor is doing and, you know, it's just ridiculous. Now, we sent out a press release that'll be launched tomorrow, but it describes the circumstances of when we launched this recall. And the amount of detail that was given to every step of the process that we had to go through in order to get the recall on the ballot or to get the recall approved for circulation. And we couldn't miss a step. If we were late or if we were off, you know, down to the type font and spacing in our, in our text. And, uh, you know, they would not approve it if it wasn't verbatim exactly as by code. Now, this governor had seven days to respond to our notice of intent to circulate. And 10 days into that seven day period, I called his attorney up and said, hey, uh, haven't seen your rebuttal yet. We're moving forward with this and we're not going to include the governor's rebuttal on the petition form because you guys failed to qualify. Or you failed to send that out in a timely manner. This, the reason that I'm saying this is that this just showcases this governor's propensity for ignoring the, his own laws, his own codes and doing things that, you know, it's obvious, the French Laundry, his being late submitting his rebuttal to the recall, his not putting the D on, next to his name when they filed the paperwork, but now he wants that reversed to be able to include that. That just shows that he feels above the law and he feels that all of these regulations and all of these procedures and laws that he signed, mind you, apply to everybody else but him. And Mike, I think you're back.
No, it does not look like Mike is back.
What's that?
It does not look like Mike is back.
Okay, well, we have an exciting show for you tonight, folks, and we're glad to have everybody on board. We have a very special guest with us tonight. Sonia Green and Sonia Green is, uh, one of the, do I call you a founding member of the, uh, Patriots for Freedom or?
I am the founder.
You are the founder.
I am the founder.
All right, well, why don't you go ahead and while we're waiting for Mike to get back in line, he's had problems with his internet all day. And I just have to say that the, uh, big tech folks have pledged to help Gavin Newsom any way they could. And it's apparent that they're still, you know, they're keeping their word.
Right, exactly. Yeah, Patriots for Freedom. Yeah, it's about uniting, uh, uniting the vote, uniting the party. Um, I see a big problem, uh, with, um, the candidates that have been chosen in the past, hence where we are today. Uh, we have a problem with uniting the vote when it comes to, um, election time and a lot of it, let's just be candid, GOP has failed us in many ways. I'm not gonna, you know, play around the mulberry bush and duck and dodge it, or, uh, I don't even understand political correct English. So, you know, I, I think my Facebook being deleted testifies to that. So, yeah, you know, understanding that we don't have confidence, um, in, in the, uh, the GOP is, is, you know, especially out here in Orange County, uh, they've led us astray in many ways. Um, they've been late in, in, uh, addressing candidates that are gonna run. Um, I think their, their intent or their, uh, direction into persuading others to step down is probably not um, in line with how it could be done. So my main focus was to do this, is to unite the voters. Um, you know, people forget that the voters are more than just bodies, which one candidate, um, was running in, that's basically what he was calling his voters are, are just strictly bodies. I don't think you is a body. Look at all the work that you've done. I'm not a body. Uh, the community is valuable. Uh, the community should be appreciated as such. Yeah, then one of the problems too that we have with them just treating, um, their voters like bodies is that you, you create a disconnect. So now, how can the community trust who you're going to be giving to us? Especially if you look at the last, um, you know, couple of decades and, and again, where we are today is pretty questionable of what they're delivering. So how are they gonna have us vote unanimously, uh, with the candidate they choose? Um, I have to be honest with you. Another thing that I, I, I have a gripe with, I feel like they operate in a high school manner. It's almost like the, the, the high school squad with all the popular kids and, and people wanna get in there and get a chance and say, oh, yeah, I went there today and I, I rubbed elbows with these people and, okay, they're gonna go with this candidate. This is where we go. This is not what we need to do. We need to find sound, good candidates, you know, and it can be bipartisan too. You know, look at Vernon Jones. He's a Democrat, but he's got a found, um, uh, foundation. He's got a sound foundation, I should say. He's a constitutionalist and things like that. We're looking for people that believe in our country, that are constitutionalist, God fearing, and not afraid to step up to the bat. We don't want special interest people. We don't want people to pretend that they're going to do the work for us. And next thing you know, you don't hear from them anymore. Or the next thing you know, they quit. So we don't want those types of people. And I think we need to start looking within our communities for these candidates. If we really want real change, we don't need the celebrities. We don't need popularity contests. And we actually need people in the grassroots to step up and we need to unite. And I think the grassroots is stronger than ever before.
I totally agree with absolutely everything that you say. And this is why I, I think that, you know, you and I, when we came together in this recall effort, it, it's pretty apparent that we're cut from the same cloth politically and, yeah, you know, our ideologies and so forth. And you know that we've had a very contentious relationship at best with the C A G O P. And it's the Women's Federation groups. It's the local commit committees in the counties that are driving this grassroots effort forward. Um, and by all means, I think that we all benefit from a strong C A G O P. Okay, but that being said, they have to be just like our government officials. They have to be responsive and accountable to the people who they serve and they can't legislate or, or govern around our wishes. If, you know, we wanna go in a certain direction, we expect that party to champion our cause. That's why we subscribe to a certain venue. That's why we subscribe to the Republican Party and to, or the Democrat Party. Um, you know, this has been a nonpartisan, no matter how the governor tries to frame us, this is a nonpartisan effort. And in a lot of ways, the people of California are stepping up and we're taking over because the people are a co-equal branch of government. We can't, we, we're the ones that hire the legislators and the govern, and the governor and, you know, the, the elected officials. And we can fire them.
Exactly.
We have that power. We can legislate through the initiative, proposition initiatives. We can, we can build dams. We can, there's a big, uh, we'll let you, let you, let you say.
The technical difficulty has been taken care of.
This is, this is big tech at war with the recall. I guarantee it, folks.
Oh, yeah.
They, they pledged to do everything they can to sabotage us and I, you know, for a fact that they're doing whatever they can. But going back to the fact.
I did Mike's not so favorite thing and put him on mute.
Going back to the, the fact that the people are taking over.
Yes.
Where the parties, the parties and the politicians have failed us.
Correct.
So, and that's why they're both, both sides of the aisle are afraid of the power that we've recently newly discovered again. You know, we're returning government governance back to its roots, back to the foundation that this country was built upon. And we're gonna continue moving forward with or without them. And just like I had shared with members of the, you know, particular party, quote, "You can get on board or get off the tracks because this train's coming."
That's right. You can rock with me or, or you can watch me rock without you. You know, so, you know, also it's something I, that I was listening to somebody in churches past Sunday and he, he said something so profound. It was really just amazing about how history and, and also, um, you know, uh, just Christianity was involved even in, in our, our coming to being America. And one of the things that he pointed out was citizen and citizen, the Greek word means co-kings. So citizenship is a co-king. We are co-kings. So this is something that, you know, our government doesn't want us to, that, that sounds pretty strong, doesn't it? You know, hey, we're co-kings. That's what they don't want us to know. You know, have you ever thought about it? You know, they're opening up our borders, allowing millions and millions of people to come through, but they never give them citizenship. Why? Because if they become co-kings, they will overrule them. They don't want them to know that fact, right? So that, that's, this is what I love about our grassroots. And you know, it's so amazing about our grassroots is that there's so much, um, bonding that has happened. So much, uh, where we've been able to connect and really move things and, and even, even if it's just little strides to medium strides, large strides, it's been so effective across the board. We have some strong fighters out there. You know, I know Stella Song is out there. We've got Lori, you know, and these people are amazing. And they, they're just fearless and fighters and the energy that they have and possess is just so inspiring and inspires me. And those are the types of people that I want to look out for and protect as well because their vote is so powerful. They are so important. They're very important to me. They're important to God. They're important to our government as we are all co-kings.
So you're, you're building a grassroots network.
Yes.
From the ground up. This is a ground swell network and, and we are hand in glove. We're dovetailed in with everything that you're doing and, you know, we both benefit from each other's activity. We, neither one of us can do it all ourselves. So we need people like you in every community throughout the state to do the same thing and then come together, united under one umbrella in a, under a coalition to, and network and communicate with one another. So we know that we're going the same direction. Now, I know that and Mike can attest to this, Tim can attest to this, you know, building this network. One of our greatest obstacles was human ego. And the Democrats have found a way to go get around that somehow in some way. And they champion one cause and move forward and, you know, they, they make sure that they agree on a goal and then they work towards that goal. And bless them for doing that. It's their job. They, you know, if they have an agenda, they wanna push it on us. That's their job to move, move it forward. It's our job to push back against it if we don't agree. And there's a lot of things that they're doing that we don't agree with. And if you ever want any entertainment, just go to Gavin Newsom's Twitter feed and start scrolling down through the comments. And, you know, you'll see a lot of comments. It's 50/50. It's mixed. But, you know, you'll see people in there that are complaining about, uh, meat-based, you know, agriculture or whatever they call it and cow farts and climate change and global warming and things like that. And, you know, somehow, some way, those folks have gotten the center stage. They've gotten on stage and they've taken the mic over. And they're pushing an agenda forward, um, you know, that not everybody's gonna agree with. And, um, you know, I had read one comment that basically said that we need to take all the meat out of our, you know, stores and things like that and go to a plant-based diet. And he, they wanted this governor to do an executive order to mandate that happen. And then there were other people that were talking about the elimination of petroleum fuels and, and things like that. Fossil fuels. Um, and, you know, he's talking about global warming, climate change and wildfires. And then there's other people chiming in about, well, you know, what about the wildfires burning all our fossil fuels up and down the state? So my point being is, um, you know, these folks have had too much attention, too long. They've, they've imposed their will upon the civilization. And they've imposed, you know, politically correct speech. Now they're trying to label certain things as hate speech and eliminate the First Amendment. They're, they're attacking our rights as citizens in California. They're attacking the Constitution and going forward. And, you know, when Asa Smith said that this is an attack on their progressive values, well, yeah, if the highest taxes in the nation, if the highest homeless rate and the skyrocketing crime rate is your progressive values, and that's where you have led us into this pit of despair. You've taken the golden state and turned it into the gutter state. Yeah, those values are under attack because we're gonna need to put somebody in office who's gonna stop the bleeding out of our tax dollars and actually, you know, reverse some of the damage that this governor and this legislature have imposed on our population. In our schools, teachers can't, um, discipline or suspend an unruly student.
Correct.
The, the teachers unions are out of control and they're in control. That's the problem. They're in control and they're out of control. Mike, were you able to, uh, come back on the line?
I think, well, I'm online on my phone now because our internet keeps going down. And I wanna actually pile on a little bit to what you're saying that I've said quite often. But I think part, really a big part of the issue is idealistically, a lot of what Gavin says and his crew sounds pretty good, right? Everybody wants clean air, air. Everybody wants clean water. The problem is that the ideas he has are not executable and they're not executable, especially on a timely basis. Reality is, well, give me an example, just the last week, right? Gavin Newsom had promised to declare 35 parcels for wildfires that are probably taking place now. He didn't supervise to get it done. It did not get done and in fact lied to the public about the here and now less than a year ago. That, we have to understand that we live in the here and now with here and now crises. And that's part of the problem, I think, that Gavin and frankly, a lot of the side has trouble getting their arms around. Look, I'm gonna be really honest and upfront and Orin, this may take you off. I have no political position on cow farts. Zero. Okay, it's not even on my radar. And maybe when I'm 89, which is approaching rapidly, sitting down, gone, I ain't wish we would have solved cow farts, but it's not on my radar right now. What's on my radar is this, the state's on fire. There's people living on Tensham Street. Our gas is going up again. By the way, everybody out there, thanks Gavin tomorrow. Tomorrow in the here and now for not using his executive order powers to reduce our gas tax by, I believe it's a 29 cents. It goes up July 1st. It's about the here and now. And frankly, that's what the recall is about, though we do after Sonia gets to speak again. It's about things we can do now to improve our state. Ideas that are executable and that's what we have. Sonia, what you're doing in Honey to Beach, I believe it's on the 26th, is an executable thing to get people together to voice our concerns, to get people to act on the recall and other causes. Gavin only cares about acting on his political career. And he only cares if it's unjust, if it affects him, as he showed on Tuesday when he sued his own state.
Right, right. Um, just a question there. I do have an event also this Friday coming up, July 2nd. It's gonna be absolutely fantastic. And again, on July 26th as well. So we're gonna do a lot of uniting. We're gonna kick off 4th of July in, in, in uniting under, under God first. So that's gonna be wonderful. I wanted to go back to, um, Orin, how you said that Democrats kind of honed in on how to work together. I, I kind of wanted to expand on that a little bit. They operate like a game. Yes, you, you made the, the comment like, you know, I don't know how they do it, but they do it. What they do is they, they prey on exactly what they're doing today. They find the, the cripple, the, and not physically what I mean, but the vulnerable minded type people. Uh, they find the people that are sensitive. A lot of liberals really are very kind people. Okay, so they're able to play on that and say, you know, this just isn't right. You know, come on over here. We're gonna give you all of these wonderful things. And it's just like, you know, um, you know, little wicked witch, you know, that can come here, man, as a pretty, she's getting the oven and see what you smell and then I'll cook you. So, um, uh, they, these people operate in a way where they're able to capture on, on their insecurities, the vulnerabilities. So they attack race, they attack gender, they attack, you know, what their sexuality is, what they identify as, and they start expanding it and making it into something they themselves in their own homes don't even believe. I can guarantee you, Gavin and his family is laughing at a lot of their constituents right now. I know they are. Uh, so then with Pelosi and the rest of them. And it's a joke to them. They're sitting here preaching to people about CRT, B L M, breaking up the nuclear family, but yet Gavin's married. He's got kids. Pelosi's married. She's got kids. And boy, she's gonna protect him. Even this little nephew of hers, right? So they all sit there and, and want to feed to these downtrodden type people. They've come from abused back backgrounds. The same thing gangs prey on. These Democrat politicians that are progressive, socialist atheists also capture those people and that's how they're working together. Now, I think another thing that they do is they do a lot of threatening too. They, they see how they operate. We know how, you know, they, they can threaten people, you know, mess with their technology. I mean, we've had what? Somebody try to threaten to expose all of our names and addresses that, that put our name on the recall, right?
Mafia style tactics.
Yeah, you know, I offered to put a billboard up. Hey, you're gonna have mine. Put it on a billboard on the freeway. So you have those types of scare tactics and that's embedded in them while they're joining into their little group. It's embedded in, in, in different cultures from the time that they're born. They're baptized in the blood of, of Democrat. And they're believed to say, these are your saving, uh, people. Regardless, if you look up, you can't afford gas. They've reduced the motivation, uh, for you to go to work. They've taken out, um, skilled trades out of school, junior high and high school to make you even want to motivate. What happened to sewing? What's wrong with cooking? What's wrong with wood shop? What's wrong with electronics? What about car shop? All these things are things to remove the ambition from people. And when you remove ambition, they government, meaning they become their ambition. And all they need them to do is sit and wait for their next move as they become richer and richer. Now, on the opposite end, we have conservatives. We know our rights. Um, we believe in God, uh, more so than not. And then we, so we also are independent thinkers. So with that being said, um, we, we get all riled up in, in what I've, I've witnessed before, but this is where I would like to see a change. And then they start trying to fight each other. But what they're fighting is the old system, uh, of the GOP because the GOP is always kind of try to dictate to people and then they switch things up. Oh, you can't talk to that person because we're gonna go with this person over here. So then you start alienating your other conservatives. So when you alienate those conservatives, guess what? You lose those conservatives. We don't wanna alienate anybody. Democrats are very good about honing in and grouping their people together under a gang structure. Yeah, it's evil. Yeah, it's atheist, but that's what's working. We don't have to go to those lengths. We just need respect. We need to understand that we have a higher calling and that's to God and that's what will make it very cohesive. And all we have to do.
Tell us a little bit about your organization. What, what's your platform? How do people get ahold of you? What events do you have coming up in the near future and what, you know, it's, I know it's an information platform and I was very honored to come down and speak and we will be there again July 26th with your group and we're looking forward to it again. Hopefully between now and then, we'll have you on the town hall again to brief us as we go forward.
Definitely. So what, again, it, um, I developed this platform. Um, I am now a PAC, which means I can endorse candidates as well. And again, I wanted to make sure that we are, are capturing solid candidates. I, I'm not looking for the popularity. I'm not looking for celebrities. I'm looking for good, a few good men, few good men and women, right?
Who might that be?
We know. So, you know, we, that's, that's what I'm, I'm doing. And again, it's about uniting, um, the party. When I say uniting the party, I mean, uh, obviously it's the, the community, the voters. One of the things that I do in every meeting is that I actually acknowledge people that live in the neighborhood that have been, you know, just, you know, part of the movement, uh, appearing at the B O S. It, all of that matters to me. There was a lady that actually emailed me the other day. She said, oh, Sonia, you know, I'd love to come to, come to your meetings. How much is it? I said, you've paid enough. Just show up. And that, you know, we welcome a donation, you know, but that's it. You've paid enough. Your, your time is more valuable to me. So, um, again, uniting everyone, um, uh, and, and bringing committees together. So we can, we, I see these, all these beautiful grassroots committees. And they're getting to know me. I'm getting to know them. So now when it's times to come to, when, when it's that time to come together and we say, okay, this is, this is the election that we're having. This is what we're coming up with. Can we all agree? And then that's what we start marketing out.
Hey Sonia, I wanna really dwell on what you're saying there because, um, what you're echoing is somebody very powerful. And another reason that we're honored, if you will, to participate in your events. I think part of the challenge with the California GOP and a little bit with part of the conservatives in general is they wanna be more like, more like the Democratic Party. They say, well, look, they've had success, so let's imitate them. And Orin, what you said is interesting before because the Democratic Party is made up, for those of you not familiar, with about 20 to 22 caucuses, they call them, little groups that they say, ah, we got nowhere to go, gonna go with the Democratic Party. And I think part of the challenge, we've been successful in the recall. And fortunately, Orin and I are not experienced politicians, so we didn't know any better. We didn't break into those groups. And so we united people under the umbrella of recallgavin2020.com. And it's interesting to hear you talk because the reality is, you know, the Democratic Party is now trying to, oh, we need to target this and target that because that's what the other guys do. And I think they're full of excluded, deleted, as I said in the earlier skit, right? Because the reality is, we just need to unite as Californians. And I don't care if, I don't think you care. But I can have to ask you a question. When I go to your event, do I need to have my Republican I D card on me to get in the door?
Not at all.
I didn't think so. And I think that's really important to, to say that we're trying to gather people in for logic. And I've said this before, as we gather more people on our podcasts and everything every week. And we talk about, oh, there's this group and that group, and this is what we hear in the press. Here's the reality of it. 11 million Californians over the age of 50 make up 46% of the electorate. And I really don't give a rodent's posterior, what part you are, what et cetera you are, just don't care. But I know you will come out and vote. And I know if you have the time, you will come to events like you're having. And looking around, those are the people that historically continually participate in politics that I think really scares the Democrats. Cause I don't think many folks in Orin, well, my age group, Orin slightly younger than me, okay, really care about cow farting. I mean, I gotta be honest with you. It, you know, until we'll see, right? I'm glad somebody's analyzing that. But it strikes a chord with people that don't know any better, simply because they're in a younger demographic and probably don't participate in your rallies and the processes, et cetera. Again, we welcome all, anybody of any demographic. But can we all unite as Californians and start? But can we all unite as Californians and start? By getting this obviously an idiot out of office.
Right, exactly. And you're right, you know, it's about the fundamentals of, of being a human being. What do we all want as, as a human being? We want an opportunity to thrive. We want an opportunity to protect. We want an opportunity to succeed, right? So those are the three fundamentals that generally everybody wants. But again, unfortunately for the Democrat politicians that are very strong in their progressive behavior and socialistic behaviors. They're only in it for self-interest and they've been able to con their voters and that's unfortunate. And with those voters now, they're strung on fear and they're also strung on loyalty. They've been taught and embedded that. Once you accept this, like, like Satan, you know, telling Eve to deep that out though, you can't turn back. And they truly believe that. They, they feel like they, if they step away, that they're actually cheating on them. You know, they, they married to the party and they can't go anywhere. That's abuse. It's almost like stocks, Stockholm syndrome. So they've, they, again, the way they've structured it is a gang mentality type of behavior. They've conned their voters, unfortunately. There's a lot of good people, I'm sure. But a lot of them now are driven by fear. A lot of them now are driven by, um, uh, mistruths. And again, they've been given that ability to say, divide, we are divided, we, and we need to stay divided. That's the Republican. They told us they're racist. Look at me. I mean, come on, how are you gonna, how are you gonna say racist? I mean, you know, my dad served in World War Two, black man, and he was, um, he was an interpreter for France and Germany. You know, he, he graduated from Warhouse College and he got into MIT. They kicked him out. There was another, uh, white conservative that said, hey, you made a grave mistake. Let's get this guy back in here. You know, we never gave up, you know? So, you know, we, we have to learn that there's no, no matter what, everyone has faced some sort of discrimination. That's the nature of human beings, you know, as long as you've been on, on this earth, you know, you can go back to, you know, if you will, caveman days. I'm sure they had their things. They wait a minute, you're not walking low enough. We don't like you. You know, you never know what it is, but everyone has faced something, but it's not enough to stop loving each other. It's not enough to stop waking up. And growing together and understanding we are the co-kings and we need to operate this government, not the other way around.
I'm sure. I, I'm sure your dad experienced, you know, a different form, different level of racial interactions during his. Growing up and his adult life and, and things like that than you have. We are making progress going forward. There's still work to be done. I don't disagree with any of that. Um, you know, I, I think that, you know, we're at a point now in our culture where it's a hinging point. And the, the count, the counterculture or cancel culture is trying to strip. Away all of the progress that we've made and bring us back decades to where. Things weren't so rosy between the cultures and the ethnicities and things. And, and try to revive some of that hostility that exists.
You know.
You know.
You know, I wanted to point out something. Again, there's imperfections in, in every situation. It doesn't matter. You could be, um, you know, short and somebody discriminates you because you, wasn't there a song, um, you know, if you're, you're, you got nobody.
Randy Newman.
There you go, right? It, it, it really doesn't matter. And one, one of the things that I, I want to share this little story with you if I can. Um, you know, growing up, I, I grew up here, you know, in Orange County, middle class area. And, you know, I, I didn't realize it, but I did grow up around a lot of white Democrats and, you know, some of them were racist, but let me tell you something. I had to think about this not too long ago. It took me all these years to figure it out. And I said, you know, I could really count. Maybe on one hand, how many times I really incurred someone actually being racist. And so there's a whole community of people that weren't like that. And I think some of the things that they, they're teaching today is that if a person experienced racism, they say, that's everybody, everybody's racist. It's not true. It's just not true. So we're also miscalculating the racist, um, content. Or the, or the things that we felt offended by. It is not in the majority. It's very slim to none. And I can tell you, a lot of people that I've even, uh, you know, had conversations with delightfully over Facebook. I said, well, how many crosses have you had burned on your lawn? Oh, well, yes, it is. I mean, come on, let's, let's talk about this. You know, one girl tried to tell me today about this little, I don't even want to mention her name, but the, the girl that, uh, you know, thought so fondly of herself to turn her back on our national anthem. Well, guess what? You're a traitor. And she said, well, you don't understand, you know, black history, baby, I'm black. Yeah, what do you mean? I can tell you about history and I basically, I basically broke it down to her. And then she said, well, you're, you're just trying to humiliate people. I said, let me get, let me let you know this very one thing that is a very truthful and is a fact. It is the truth. That does not mean it's humiliating. What it means is that because you heard the truth, you just feel humiliated. There's a big difference. So the truth is the truth, but again, these people are, are preaching a lot of things that are just not true.
You know, it's interesting. Moving, moving forward, um. You know, I think that some of the sentiment that we're talking about right now is that there, there is a shift taking place. And we're one mechanism in that shift in our state. And, you know, we're, we're trying to steer the state in a particular direction and move forward in a, you know, pull our state out of the gutter. And back and return it to the golden glory that it deserves to be. Make California a place calling, uh, worth calling home again for people and businesses. Get businesses and people coming back into California. You know, over the last ten years, we've lost five million people. We lost a congressional seat. And, you know, racism is a component of everything going on in our culture and it can't be ignored. We understand that. Uh, but, you know, the, the counterculture moving forward, everything that we are addressing in this recall. Is on the table. All the cards are on the table and we are the new steering committee for California. And we have our hands firmly on the helm and we're going to drive this ship into the right direction, out of the rocks and into clear water. Where we can all survive and make it a place and secure a future for California that we can all live with. And I think that's the goal that we're working towards. So tell, tell us again, I don't know if, if, um, you covered it. Thoroughly, what you're, how to get ahold of you, your organization, what you have coming up as far as your events and things like that.
Yes, my website is patriots, the number four, freedom, the number five dot com. Again, that's patriots, the number four, freedom, the number five dot com. You can also email me at Sonia, S O N Y A, at patriots for freedom five dot com. You hear that forty five in there?
I saw, I, I knew there was some sort of a subliminal message in there, but yeah. I understand.
So yes, that's how you can get ahold of me. My events this Friday, it will be, um, out here in Orange County in Fountain Valley. Patriots for Freedom, we're having a great event. And then again, we'll have another one on July twenty sixth, which I'm really looking forward to as well. And then I have another one scheduled. I'm, I'm one of those that like to kind of hold secrets until kind of the last minute and wah, and spring it on people. But it should be a lot of fun. I think people leave, uh, very inspired. Um, it's very uplifting. It's a great.
And you have, you have a good showing. I, I've attended your event and one of them. And, uh, you know, I was pleasantly surprised at the number of people that the level of energy in the room is, is palpable. I mean, you walk into that room and it's just a, a warm, energetic feeling. People are happy to be there and they're driven. And, you know, they're all coming together, taking time out of their lives to, to congregate. And come together to help drive the movement, the ground swell grassroots movement forward. And I'm not just talking about the recall. I'm talking about local events in your communities. And, and I could see your, you know, you're the model that you're working with, just growing exponentially throughout the state. Because this is something that the local parties, the teetoters aren't doing. This is, this is what they're missing. This is that human aspect of the parties that's let us down. Where they don't have that sense of camaraderie or connection with the local community. They've lost that. And that's why I say, uh, strong C A G O P is important. But we need to return them to the roots where they were begun. Because it is a great platform. It is a great party and it's worth, you know, growing. But in a direction that is responsive and accountable to the people that they serve, just like our local or our government officials.
Exactly. And you know what makes it a great party? It is the people. It is the voters. So if they, if, if people want to really work with them, they're going to have to be a part of that community. One of the things that I, I, um, that I do myself, I, I mean, I own a business. I work quite a bit. I'm all over the place. But I'm there at the board of supervisor meetings, you know, I'm, I'm there at the school boards. You know, I, even I fought for a school board, uh, against CRT that's not even in our district. We have to be out there. If they're not out there with your community. I have to question how much you're going to serve the community. We need those types of people. We need those types of people back in government. If you're going to take any type of, and we need to start clearing out the local, the local government. We need to start there because they're really getting in there and they do have some power. And we need to make sure we get the right ones in there. And we don't want someone that's going to get in there and, and, you know, be nice to a few people that they think is important. And then ignore the community. We don't need that either. We need people that are not afraid to get out there. Be warm, be naturally loving to people, want to see their people, want to hear from their voters. You know, you, you, you have to be able to be able to do that and get out there and fight with them. If you know something is wrong, you get out there. And if you can't get out there, you let them know some way that you're supporting them, rather it be writing a letter of support, you name it. You gotta get out there and fight with your community. You cannot be a, a, a king sitting on the, on the throne, watching your co-kings get out there and fight. You have to be right along with them.
Sonia, to cut, to kind of jump in with that, because that's part of what I want to get across before we come to end here. One of the things in your group, one of the reasons you're on tonight, I want to stress. Now tonight, people may look at the actual Facebook and see seventy six to eighty. But we've got fourteen to fifteen hundred, probably close to two thousand YouTube that watch this, all right? Last week and we'll watch it this week. I want everybody out there to understand something very important. And you said this earlier when my internet went out and I'm back on the phone. Good luck trying to keep me out Gavin. But, um. The recall and what you're doing is a way for people to talk and communicate. In order to keep that up, and I want everybody out there to pay strong attention to this. We just got in three hundred and fifty thousand pieces of stuff, trifles, door hangers. Okay, remittance envelopes for donations for us. We've got yard signs coming in that need to be handed out. Look, if you want to go out and talk about the school board, let me tell you a really good way to do it. You can go out, you can get the information from our team. How you can gain the walking districts or houses around you regardless of party. And we can send them to you as long as you lead with the recall. And when you find, to your point, local offices are important, but the number of people you knock on the door and they go, whatever, Bartine, I thought that was a CIA. No, I mean, the water board that the people sit on to determine your water. School board. So a really good way today is use, and do it now. Don't wait till next election cycle. I hear this all the time. Go to our website, register to volunteer, send us a message. Sonia, I encourage you when you announce tomorrow night, get them, let us send you the voter data. It's legal to do as long as when you go to the door, right? You show, get and talk about Gavin Newsom and then can lead to other conversations. You cannot participate, to your point, in this process every once in a while. We have lightning in a bottle and for everybody out there, help us participate. Help Sony get done what she needs to get done, all of us, by getting out there and getting people to vote yes in this election. And the, and if you have other subjects you want to talk about, other candidates. Or we still have the first amendment as of this morning, the Gavin signing off, making sure, right? And he's working on it. You still can go talk about things, but everybody out there, if you really want to make a difference. You're not going to have another time like this in history, guarantee you. Well, we have an election coming up that has them so nervous, they don't even know how to shift the rules. The time is now, right now.
They're, they're so nervous. They think that a D next to somebody's name is going to change the outcome of the election. They think that trying to threaten our people and intimidate them to remove their signatures is going to get people to actually remove their signatures. That didn't happen.
No.
They're on the ropes. We got to keep them on the ropes and we got to keep punching hard.
That's right.
Let me be, let me be quasi facetious here. I think the reason Gavin, and this is facetious for those of the press listening in. But I can't resist whether I like it or not. I think the D that Gavin wants there might have been his grade point average in high school. And that's why he wants it out there because he's shown us he's that kind of governor. Okay, I mean, seriously dude.
Oh, yeah.
But here's, okay, yes, that was a joke for those of the press going, oh, Leonard called him a bad student. Well, they're definitely calling the bad governor, all right? Sonia, before we leave the show, could you write your website into the chat?
Yes.
To all panelists and attendees.
And I just want to wish, uh, Magdalena a great happy birthday.
Absolutely, Magdalena.
I won't say how old she is, but.
She already told everybody. But anyway, happy birthday to you, Magdalena. Everybody out there, participate. All right, we've got all this merchandise and we've got orders we don't have enough. We need donations to keep this going. I can't stress that enough. We totaled up our bills today, right? Thank you, Orin, for the demo. We totaled up our bills today and Orin has to sell his glasses. I won't be wearing a tie next week. We seriously need donations and the big parties are not stepping up. So it's time like we've done the whole time. We, the people, to set up, step up. Friday nights of the French laundry, seven to nine. Last week on our podcast alone, we had twelve to fourteen hundred people, up from three hundred. This podcast again, thanks to Tim, again, has fourteen hundred to two thousand, probably watch it this week. It's growing again. You cannot take time off from the movement. We have the data. You want to call, you want to walk, you could do anything. One last point of clarification, I know you're sorry I came back, Orin, but too bad for you, okay, is. The official election has not even been declared yet. What? I want you to understand that once her sureliness declares the official election. Which Gavin now actually is looking for a decision by July twelfth. So this is really interesting. So we don't know when election is going to be. Candidates will actually have twenty four hours or so to declare their official candidacy. I saw in the chat, if you want to see who is filed papers to declare their official candidacy. Please go to Ballipedia. You will find all kinds of stats on Ballipedia about your school board, your district, et cetera. And the people that are thinking of running for governor, Ballipedia. But the election is coming soon. Gavin's not quite sure when he wants it because he wants everyone to know that grade point average. I mean, his party. But it doesn't matter. It's coming whether he likes it or not, and we, the people need to take charge of it. Orin, anything you want to add before we sign off?
I just see that, uh, there's been a bunch of people that have been chiming in about. Kevin Kylie this, Kevin Kylie that in the chat room and his name's been floated out quite a bit in the last, in recent history. And, uh, I, we're here, ya folks and, uh. There will be more. News to come at a later time.
And tune in to Friday nights, the French laundry, because I want to go more in depth on the election. And it's going to kind of be a special legal show with a guest that we have on. It's time we, the people took our state back. We've done phase one. God bless. Good night. Be in touch. Go to recall Gavin twenty twenty dot com. Donate and participate by making sure you distribute merchandise, get the voter list, get out there. Big tech, low tech, any tech, they can't stop us. God bless and good night.
Good night.